Welcome to the December 5th, 2017 Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meetings held in the Centennial Building, 12th South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. This evening, our invocation will be presented by Pastor Gary Reynolds of the Yukon First Church of the Nazarene, and that will be followed by the flag salute. Pastor Gary.
Our gracious God, we are reminded from your word that the government rests upon your shoulders. Your word also tells us that if we will ask, you will give us wisdom. We pray for these elected officials here tonight, that you would share with them wisdom beyond their own, so that they might do the very best for all for whom they represent. We give you thanks, Father, in the name of the one who was born in Bethlehem. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
McCarron.
Here.
Smystrela.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Alberts.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
This evening, we have two presentations brought before us, and Ms. Janet Smith, would you come forward from the Oklahoma Municipal League? And we also would like to have Mr. Gary Knight and Ms. Teresa Stover to come forward as well.
It's an honor for me to be here tonight on behalf of the Oklahoma Municipal League to present these awards for 25 years of excellence. The first award goes to Teresa Stover in recognition of a quarter century of service to the city of Yukon and the Public Works Department. So congratulations. And our second award goes to Officer Gary Knight with the city of Yukon for a quarter century of service in the police department.
This is our visitor's section of the meeting where visitors can come forward and address the council on a non-agended item. And this evening, we have Ms. Donna Misi. Is that how you pronounce that? Okay. Donna, would you come forward and give us your address and tell us what you'd like to speak to?
Thank you. My name is Donna Misi. I'm a public school nurse for Oklahoma City Public Schools. I live at 4121 Cove Drive here in Yukon. And ladies and gentlemen, I am so privileged to come to you tonight. I'm an advocate of our Maple Fry Library. And I lost my job as a nurse about two years ago, and due to downsizing. And I just walked in the doors of the library and was greeted by such a friendly staff and capable, and they helped me in so many ways to fill out job applications online. And I think I'm a pretty good nurse, pretty good teacher, but you don't want me on that computer. So I'm here to just give my heartfelt thanks to the staff at Maple Fry Library. They have been so courteous and so professional. They would come along beside of me so many times. They would stand around me while I was filling out an application for a deadline, and I landed that job, and that's why I'm a public school nurse right now. Sarah, the director, is such a sweet lady. She would invite me into her office and encourage me and just ask, "How you doing? Is everything going your way like you need it to go?" And every single staff member just helped in so many ways. And they didn't just help me. I saw so many kids during the summer program crowd around the desk and be very demanding and insisting, and the parents tired and arguing with the kids. But these fine people would come and just encourage them, would help them. They were like a buffer, and they settled a lot of issues. I saw the staff encourage these kids to love to read. And I find that this library is a safe place, a fun place to learn. And I think about our future leaders. I see a lot of young people in here tonight, and I hope that this library has the funds it needs and the support and help it needs to continue starting these kids from very young to love to learn and love to read. And that's why I'm here tonight, to thank them, this fine staff, and to ask for your support and your funds to help them with everything that they need. I see them as the hub of our community, and I know that they're the heart of it, and they serve so many people every single day. I believe this is a great investment with a huge reward for all of us. I thank you for your time and consideration tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming up. Are there any other folks who wish to speak this evening on a non-agended item? Seeing none, we will now recess as the Yukon City Council, and we will reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A on the YMA consent docket, this item is placed on the agenda, so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all the authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve: A) The minutes of the regular meeting of November 21, 2017; B) Payment of material claims in the amount of $204,645.57. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item 2A, consider renewing a listing agreement with Robin O'Grady, broker of the Caliber Property Group, to exclusively list for sale a tract of land being a part of the southeast quarter of Section 16 Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma. And that's around the area of East Main and Park, Yukon Parkway, that is owned by the city of Yukon. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
We will now adjourn as the YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Item 1 on the consent docket, this item is placed on the agenda, so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all of the council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve: A) The minutes of the regular meeting of November 21, 2017; B) Payment of material claims in the amount of $543,613.70; C) Designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade; D) Setting the date for the next regular council meeting for December 19, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12th South 5th Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Russell.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. Item 2, do we have any reports of boards, commissions, or city officials tonight, Mr. Crosby?
None report. No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item 3 is, consider approving a software agreement with emergency reporting for a new fire and EMS reporting solution at the first year cost of $15,865, as recommended by the Information Technology Director. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay. I would like our fire chief, Sean, would you come up and tell us what you're doing with this, please?
Yes, we are currently using a software called Firehouse, and this is an upgraded reporting system. It's web-based. It's a lot more user-friendly. It's going to help us to track our training for ISO records and such.
Okay, and this would be an annual budgeted item, is that correct?
Yes, sir. And we have that now with Firehouse.
Do you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this is something that we will see in the budget every year. Okay? What does it buy you?
Do what?
What does it buy you?
Well, just like I said, it's an upgraded reporting system. You know, we have to budget for the Firehouse now.
Right.
This is going to be, it's just the initial cost is the startup. It's going to be the same as in our budget, and it helps with like all of our training records, which we have to, right now, we can't report any of those through Firehouse. And that's, so for all of our ISO training records and such, this is going to help us to track those.
Okay, well, the recurring costs are less, though. Is that correct?
Yes.
Each year? All right, any other discussion? Okay, vote please. Thank you, Sean.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item 4, consider authorizing the expenditure of funds not to exceed $26,012 for the final payment of the New World Systems Aegis MSP to the Aegis Enterprise CAD software upgrade to be paid to Tyler Technology as recommended by the Information Technology Director. And do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
We had some bugs in that, did we not, Jim, on that? And you want Gary to comment on that?
Yeah, Gary, please.
This was for the upgrade to Enterprise CAD.
Right.
And it was started, we initially contracted with them over a year ago, and there was some problems. Their upgrade path was not there. They did fix all of that, and they put us back on the schedule April of this year, and we did just go live with the system on November 7th. So this is just the final benchmark payment of, they billed it out in four different segments.
Right.
So yes, we are up and live with it now.
Okay, and you are comfortable with everything we've got going there?
Yes.
And that's no more?
Right.
No more defugality of any kind?
Right.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion? Vote please.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Item 5, consider authorizing the expenditure of funds not to exceed $48,068 plus shipping for the purchase of a Bauer compressor, fill station for fire station number one, from Casco Industries, Inc., Oklahoma State Contract SW17241, as recommended by the fire chief. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? From there? I have one item, Sean, I guess I'll pick on you again. You want to comment on exactly what we're doing here with the Firehouse?
Yes, it's a SCBA fill station compressor for Station 1. We currently don't have one. We have a smaller unit at Station 2, and it's about 15 years old. So anytime the guys do any training, returning from a fire, or just our daily checks, anytime our bottles get low, they have to go out of district to Station 2 to fill.
So this is just going to enhance our facility, or our ability to respond?
Absolutely, yes. And it'll also have oxygen, so we can fill our oxygen tanks too when we return from medical calls. Currently, anybody from Station 1, if the bottles get low, they have to go to Station 2, out of district, to fill.
Okay, so just give us better capability then for keeping everything full?
Yes, and this is a little bigger unit than we have at Station 2, because we have more manpower at Station 1. Most of our rigs are at Station 1.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Item 6, consider approving a deviation from the planned unit development, called a PUD, of the residence of Yukon Hills, 105 East Bass Avenue, for relocation of a dumpster pad as recommended by the planning commission. And I would ask for a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, vote please.
Smystrela.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Item 7, consider approving a conditional use permit for Boulder Designs to provide storefrontage and sign advertising on its property, 1705 West Highway 66, zoned agricultural with conditions as recommended by the planning commission. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, vote please.
Russell.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Yanda.
Yes.
Smystrela.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes. Item 8, new business, Mr. Shivers.
No new business tonight, Mr. Mayor.
No new business, so that takes us to item 9, which is council discussion. Ms. Donna.
Well, I would like to congratulate and say thank you to Gary and Teresa for their many years of service to the city of Yukon, and also commend our Yukon Library, Sarah and her board members and staff, done an excellent job, and we received an excellent report from Sarah and Inez at the study session tonight, and I just want to congratulate them on a great job. Thank you.
Ms. Early.
Yes, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and also hopefully that you're going to all enjoy the lights in the park. How many of you haven't been there? Oh, two, three, okay. Well, it's wonderful, so you must go. We are really blessed to have all the people that work and make that happen, and Mr. Crosby, for his support, and have a wonderful Christmas.
Thank you, Pam. Mr. Rich.
I also would like to thank or congratulate Officer Knight and Teresa Stover for their 25 years of service. Thank you all very much. And thank you all for being here tonight and just coming to see what goes on at the city. Everybody, like she said, get out, go see the lights. Thank you.
Mr. John.
During our study session, we received a good, healthy set of numbers dated December the 5th of 2017. Our pest accounts, all of those pest accounts are up considerably from what they were the last report in October. I always like to report on the general fund. In June, it was $2,449,180, and then it's up now to $3,32,455. So the good news is, is the general fund is growing, and overall, the sales tax, the report for, from November the 15th, it's the November 2017 sales tax report, same month period last year, it's up 11 percent, and year-to-date, it's up 7.82 percent. So it looks like that the numbers are working, reports are up, all the, every account that we were, provided a report on, the revenues were up. So, Mr. Crosby, this deposit accounts, this December 5th, 2017, is that available if someone wanted to look at that? Do they, how would they get a copy of it?
They would contact City Clerk.
Okay, thank you. So those numbers are there and available if someone's interested to know the balances of the different accounts around the community. With that in mind, it's time to shop in Yukon. Every penny you spend here helps to contribute, and that's why those counts grow so much, especially during these months, it's crucial that you stay here and shop. We bought new stuff for the firemen tonight, before we bought handguns for the police and other things around the community. So staying here and being mindful of shopping on the north side of 10th Street is important. So just that little 40-foot street makes a big difference as far as the money coming to the community, so be mindful of that. Christmas in the park is going well, I can report that. Be patient with the traffic. I live over in Spring Creek, and sometimes it's a battle. I left my office the other night, I made it to Kentucky Fried Chicken, and I'm like, "What's up? Why can't I get through the light?" They were lined up from Kentucky Fried Chicken, clear to Vandiment, clear down to 7-Eleven. So, and amazingly, it's been pretty, I haven't seen any fistfights at 7-Eleven or anything, so it looks like people are celebrating. But continue to be patient, I know that sometimes I get frustrated. Congratulations to Gary and Teresa, and for 25 years of dedication, that's a quarter of a century, but that's the thing I think that's important that makes this community really a special place, is because they are exceptional pair, but there are many more that are just like them, that have dedicated a long part, a big part of their life to this community and making it the place that it is. So the things don't happen here by accident, they happen here on purpose, and people that have been here for 25 years, they certainly have a purpose. Finally, Sarah, I guess I'll jump on the bandwagon. Thank you for the great report. Is Inez still here? I thought maybe she would read our story for all the kids here, but I thought that was a really a good report, and I, you can tell that she loves and cares about the library, and it is really important, reading, you know, I was always a kid, when I was in school, I was like, "This is a means to an end, just give me the sheepskin so I can get out of here, I don't want..." And you know, I think it was, it was the end of the staircase. So if you don't continue to educate and read, you know, you don't continue to go on up. So I've reacquainted myself with reading more audiobooks than the hardback, so I'm a fan of that, and I'm glad to know that you have many of those. So, but I would challenge everyone to continue to read, it's a vital resource, you've got a great set of people, thank you for that great commitment and dedication that you make to our community, contribution you make to the community. Thank you.
John? I had a wonderful opportunity this morning to go out and celebrate a water tower. Now, that strikes a lot of folks as being kind of strange, but infrastructure is what we are about and why we are here, and why we have such a good community, and why we have wonderful things, that when you walk in your bathroom and you want to take a nice hot shower, you really like it when the water comes on. And so this morning, we dedicated a 1 million gallon, $5 million water tower out on the west side of our community. The head of the Corps of Engineers for our region, Colonel Hussein, Hussin is his name, was here, and we celebrated a ribbon cutting. I think if you go out to the west side of town, you'll see that really pretty water tower standing out there, which will allow us to do a lot of things in the future. We are looking downstream in the future, and it's very important for all the wonderful things that we talk about, that be that the lights downtown, or the wonderful job they're doing over at the library, and certainly, we have a police and fire department second to none. And, you know, those, those things aren't free, and they are very important to our community and that we look forward when we're doing them. So, once again, I was very joyful when I was able to celebrate that opportunity this morning. Once again, I as well want to thank Janet Smith for coming as well, and presenting the awards to Gary and Teresa, both of whom are very deserving. We live in a wonderful community, and I certainly am very proud to say that I live here to any person I meet. So with that...
No, I've got some questions.
Seeing...
Sounds of the season?
Well, that's right, I haven't read my list yet.
Okay.
I have a list that Tammy provides to me here every, every week unless I've lost it. You're out of luck, I found it. Right course, now through New Year's Eve, we are conducting a diaper drive at all of the Community Center, Jackie Cooper Gym, and the Dale Robertson Center. So for all of those who could see your way through to giving up some diapers for the Children's Center in Bethany, it's something that we support here, very, very important. They actually use about 10,000 diapers a week. So it's not an idle thing for those of you who've ever gone out and bought a box of diapers. Now through December the 15th, Santa's Toy Shop, the Yukon Fire Department, so if you can stop by the, one of the fire stations, Fire Station 1, I guess particularly, donate a new unwrapped toy, so that Santa can give that out to all of the kids here that are in need in Canadian County. The coffee this Friday, well, that was, you got to get down here a little bit further. Thursday, Sounds of the Season, I found it early. Okay, it's at the Fine Arts Auditorium, 7:30 p.m., Christmas performance for the Philharmonic, and it does benefit our community. Every year, we have a lot of really nice sponsors that set that up to provide us with a, really a quality of life issue, and it's a wonderful thing. If you've not ever been, please take the time to go. And Saturday, December the 31st, will be the conclusion of Christmas in the park. Next year, moving in, I mean, it just, it just keeps getting better. January the 3rd, we have New Year's Free Throw Contest at the Jackie Cooper Gym. Saturday, January the 13th, the Baby Crawl and Toddler Trot. All you guys can go, you know that, don't you? Okay. Saturday, January the 27th, will be the Daddy Daughter Dance. Please get in early, because we usually have a full, full complement of programs there, and tickets are, are available. We haven't, we haven't started, the tickets, the tickets will be available in January. So with that...
No, did you say the date of the Sounds of the Season?
Yes, I thought I did.
I didn't, I didn't hear it.
Oh, Thursday, December the 14th.
Thank you. I didn't hear it. If you did, I'm sorry. That's right.
Once again, I want to... Once again, I want to thank everybody for coming. I want you to enjoy a wonderful holiday season, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and this meeting is adjourned.